Go ahead and call the May 14th meeting of the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everyone this evening. Please make sure again and silence your cellphone. If you wish to be involved in any of the public hearings this evening, I would just again point you back to the podium lectern, whatever the wooden box is in the back. Grab one of the pieces of paper, you can sign it up and turn it in up front. So, we appreciate you all being here. We'll go ahead and start off with the roll call.
Bishop?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Kimball?
Present.
Carrie?
Here.
Mr. Manley, any amendments to the agenda this evening?
No, there's not.
Okay, seeing none, that moves us to ceremonies, appointments, announcements, and/or presentations. Do we have any?
There's none.
Okay. Commissioners, any declaration of conflict with any of the information that we were reviewing this evening?
No.
No.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. And, Mr. Manley, once again, I'll turn it over to you for the consent calendar.
All right, so item A is the minutes from the April 9th, 2019 meeting. Item B is the River City Bed and Breakfast, file number USC-1-2019, the reasons decisions. Item C would be the reason decisions for the Gabriel Estates subdivision, file number SUBD-32019. Item D is the reason decisions for the Wildflower Meadows subdivision, file number SUBD-4-2019. And item E would be the reason decisions for the Coleman Acres subdivision, file number SUBD-1-2019.
Okay.
I'd move to approve the consent calendar as presented. Second?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion, a second, and a possible third? Go ahead and call for vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, item eight on the agenda this evening is citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda. Comments on issues that are planned for future meeting agendas should be held for that meeting. Anyone here wishing to speak for citizen issues? Seeing none? We'll go ahead and move on. I'm assuming we are no unfinished or old business?
Correct.
Which takes us to the majority of this evening, and that would be our public hearings. One quick note before we get things started that I always like to share, let's make sure that we're all civil. Hold applause, any cheering, anything of that nature, hold that for a sporting event. We're here tonight to make some decisions. We all live and work in this community and want to make it a better place, so we'll all work together to do that. So, I just ask that we're civil in everything that we do. That being said, we'll go ahead and open the Peregrine Place major subdivision amendment, file number SUBD-00062019. I believe, Ethan, you are presenting.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Ethan Porter. I'm this planner one for the City Post Falls, here to present case file SUBD-6-2019, which is the Peregrine Place first edition major amendment. So, the owner is Polar Company LLC, and the applicant is Dobler Engineering. So, the requested action tonight is that the commissioners, to review the proposal, determine that the subdivision amendments meet the requirements of the ordinance and approve the proposed subdivision amendments with appropriate conditions. So, here's the site for the Peregrine Place subdivision. As you can see, we have west of Spokane, north of Grange, and then Guy Road is right here. So, that kind of gives you the idea of where it's at. And the first addition for, that's being presented tonight, is for the southern part of the subdivision, which again, Grange is right here, and then Spokane Street is right here. So, some additional information is that the first edition portion of Peregrine Place subdivision is 4.467 acres. The entire Peregrine Place subdivision is 14.53 acres, and the current land use for the first edition is vacant with native grasslands. The proposed density is 3.85 du Sole units per acre, which is down from the 3.92, and this is due to a shift from one of the lots in the northern part to the southern part, and that creates 56 lots rather than the proposed and approved, or the, excuse me, the approved 57 lots of the original Peregrine Place subdivision. And so, the density for the first edition is modified from 4.03 to 4.25 du Sole units per acre. And again, that's from that shift of that one lot from the north to the south. The water provider is East Green Acres Irrigation District, and the sewer provider is the City of Post Falls. Again, I will show you on the slides to come, that shift from that lot, 18 to 19, so that creating one lot from the tracks, I'll show you that in a later slide. And so, we look at the via, the review criteria for the subdivision, and the first point for water provisions is being met by East Green Acres Irrigation District. You can see that in Exhibit A6 in your staff report. And then, review criteria two is the City of Post Falls providing sewer service, which they do have capacity to serve the proposed subdivision amendment. And then, for review criteria three, we have the streets, proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. And then, looking at this slide, we can see the original Peregrine Place subdivision and how the road of Stagecoach Drive was connecting through from Grange and going north. And so, the new proposal and the amendment is going to be creating a cul-de-sac, and so, there'd be no connection to, or throughway for Stagecoach Drive. This depicted Stagecoach Drive name would then be later at a time renamed, since it's not continuing through. Right here, they are proposing a five-foot sidewalk to continue through the cul-de-sac to connect with Grange to provide pedestrian access. We also have these tracks that are created from the subdivision, that this is going to be the 19th lot within the first edition, and it will be, it's the intent to replat these to be rectangular plats, and so that they wouldn't be kind of divided up where people would have a hard time developing them. This is an R, this is an, excuse me, this is a R1 proposed subdivision that was already approved. And so, you can see here a little closer that the lot widths are meeting the R1 zoning. And, as mentioned before, the 4.25 du Sole units per acre is still under the R1 density requirements with the minimum, or the maximum of five units per acre. And the reason for the cul-de-sac reconfiguration is due to the road design that was originally, as in this one. This previous road design was unable to meet grade and city standards, so they had to reconfigure to the cul-de-sac. So, the topographic aspect of the land was unable to accommodate that, so they had to go to a cul-de-sac, which is basically review criteria number four. No other topographical conditions presenting hazards have been identified besides that difficult in the grade for the road design. And then, review criteria five, we can see that, like I mentioned before, it's zoned to R1, and it meets the R1 standards for lot widths. So, here we see the zoning map as being R1 subdivision among other R1 subdivisions. And then, the future land use designation is residential, which it is within a residential community surrounding it. Review criteria six is the, be met through the growth and development of this area being through building permit applications and impact fees associated with those, that there will allow the community to bear no more than its fair share cost for the development. So, the agencies that this was routed to, as you can see on the slide. And then, the comments that were received were from Cooney County Fire and Rescue, who are neutral on the proposed subdivision amendment, and the police department also, who are neutral on the project. The motions tonight are as approved as presented through this presentation and the staff report provided to you. Also, you could approve with modified conditions or deny the proposed application. Is there any questions or comments this time?
Any questions?
No.
No.
No. All right. Thank you, sir. Go and have the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee. Let's see, I'm going to this up real quick. How do you make it do a slideshow, you guys? Okay, good job. Okay, so, I won't take but a minute, but I do want to focus on a few highlights. It's a request for amendment, I mean, we've got that, okay? Ethan showed you and did a fine job, showed you what the approved plat was. He commented on the through street that was originally approved. Just want to reiterate that what's driving this is the engineering part of it going to a cul-de-sac. And you can see, when you go to a cul-de-sac, we had to reconfigure lots. And yes, we added one, but we're still under the approved number of lots. So, I'm just stating that here. We did look at other options for that road. We looked at connecting it. It was originally lined up with Stage Coach, good, hold on, wait for it, Stage Coach across Grange. It's been a long day, guys. So, we looked at moving it to the west, but the offset from that intersection wasn't going to work. It helped the grades, but it didn't help the offset. In the end, long story short, here's what we ended up with. I wanted to put this picture up, so you can see, this is from the improvement plans. Here's the sidewalk that connects off the cul-de-sac to give us pedestrian connectivity, sidewalk on Grange. So, we pretty much covered the bases, hit the highlights, 18 lots plus one tract, and as Ethan correctly pointed out, this will be the 19th lot. Just a quick note of interest, in the Arnold Estates plat, these tracks actually have a note that said that it would be incorporated in the adjacent lot upon development. So, these, this tract, and there's another one that doesn't show here, right here in Arnold Estates, were meant to be incorporated here. And they are owned by the HOA for that purpose. Pedestrian access, sidewalk from the cul-de-sac, and then Grange frontage now will be maintained by the HOA, because now we have two lots that back up to it. So, what else do I say? Yeah, there's the plat part of it you've already seen, and that's it.
Questions for applicant? Nothing? All right. Thank you, sir. Public comment?
We have one.
We have one? We have one individual in favor, does not wish to speak. David Brummer, "The proposed amendment will help curb additional, curb additional traffic in my neighborhood. The amendment is much better proposal than the original." I'm assuming we have none neutral, none against. So, therefore, I believe, sir, you have no rebuttal or need for rebuttal. So, I'll go ahead and open up. Do we have any questions? Staff, applicant, anyone else?
No, I kind of have to agree with the one comment. I think it would, you know, help with traffic, and it doesn't really do a, change anything very much.
Okay. Other questions?
No.
Okay. Go ahead and close it. Open it up. Vicky Jo, you made a very good point. Anybody else have anything to add? If not, look for a motion.
Everything seems to meet the requirement of the subdivision ordinance, and it, as mentioned, it is a major amendment. And that major amendment doesn't change the fact that it meets all the requirements. So, I would therefore move to approve subdivision 6-2019, finding that it meets criteria one through six of the subdivision ordinance, and adopting conditions one through eight as found in the staff report.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, motion, second. Call for vote.
Bishop?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
All right, so move. That brings us to the second public hearing this evening. We'll go ahead and open the Berkshire Place subdivision. Mr. Manley, to present.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a really quick request of our attorney, please? We have a lot of people here that probably, I've seen a lot of new faces, and I have feeling a lot of them are probably here for this one. Could you kind of speak a little bit about the process and our decision-making process, and how that has to work with regards to the criteria?
Sure. So, whenever we have a public hearing, state law requires that we have adopted a list of approval criteria, and the city code contains those approval criteria for zone changes, for special use permits, for subdivisions, and the like. Those are the only criteria that we get to consider when we're having public hearings. So, for subdivisions, those criteria are typically, is there adequate water supply? Is there inadequate wastewater service available to the site? Are the roads designed to meet city standards? Do the lots in the, in the subdivision meet the zoning code requirements? Things like, is it the right size? Does it have the right amount of frontage? Is it the right density? Those types of zoning code requirements. The other one is, are there any soil or topographical issues that would prevent development? And then, finally, there's another criteria essentially that is aimed to offset greater-than-expected impact created by the development, because the normal run-of-the-mill impact for, is dealt with through impact fees. So, you pay impact fees for, for streets, for parks, for public safety infrastructure. So, if there's an extraordinary impact, that last criteria is there to allow us to address that. But those are the only issues that the Planning Commission or the City Council, on appeal, if it's appealed, those are the only things that we get to consider. And that's kind of driven by our state law.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Kimball? Appreciate that.
Yeah, so, John Manley, Planning Manager here with the City of Post Falls, introducing the Berkshire Place case file, SUBD-2-2019. The owner of this is Polar Company LLC, with the applicant being Gordon Dobler, who is present this evening. So, the request is for you to review these proposed modifications to what was to be Black Stallion Ranch First Edition. And I'll go in, as I present this, some iterations of the Black Stallion Ranch and some of its history. But, but in this review, find that it meets a review criteria that we just recently discussed in the ordinance, and approve the proposed amendments along with any appropriate conditions. So, what you see here highlighted is where the amendment, or the affected area to the amendment, is being proposed, and that's about four acres. Looking at the zoning of this parcel, you can see that the darker yellow, that's R1, the lighter yellow was R1S. And you can see to the east just a bit, you got some smart code zoning. The lighter purple is very similar to an R1 zoning, and the darker purple is more of your medium-density mixed residential-type zoning code for smart code. It's a form-based code. Also, you can see this area is just to the west of Chase Road, and just north of Poline, directly adjacent to Black Stallion Ranch, which is at this location. So, I went over the size. This current property is vacant, mostly with grasslands and other vegetation. There is really no significant topography issues with it. Water would be provided by East Green Acres, and Exhibit A7 is an exhibit of the will-serv letter from them, with sewer being provided by the City of Post Falls. So, here is the current subdivision plan for this. The road is planned to extend Hannah Street a little bit to the west, and meandering to the southwest. You have four lots to the north of it, one flag lot, and then three other lots. And then, to the south, you would have five lots fronting onto Hannah Street. So, they're proposing nine single-family residential lots on this four-acre piece, with the medium lot size being about 16,000. All lots would meet the minimum for the R1 was required. 6,500 is the minimum requirement for an R1 zone, so they're all larger than that. The density, there was an annexation agreement, which I'll go into some detail on that, that kind of capped a 5.3-acre annexation at one time for two dwelling units per acre. This particular portion would be at 2.25 dwelling units per acre on that remaining four, but it doesn't make it inconsistent with the original annexation agreement. And the proposed street, as discussed, is to extend Hannah Street, but it is going to be slightly shorter than the original approval. So, looking at the review criteria for the subdivision, definite provisions have been made for water supply. That's in Exhibit A7 with the will-serv letter. In the staff report, it's noted that the City of Post Falls can't provide sanitary sewers, though criteria two is met. Criteria three, looking at the streets and its consistency with code and the comp plan, which it would meet that. Four involves the topographical conditions and hazards, there's none. The fifth one is really the one that comes under a bit of scrutiny on considering this review, and that's, is the zoning right for it, and is it conform with other requirements? And those other requirements, in this case, would be that annexation agreement that occurred in 2006. So, is it consistent with that annexation agreement, and does it meet the minimum lot size for R1, which I'll go into further detail. Six is the one dealing with impact fees and its fair share costs, and so, those are generally paid at the time of building permit for situations like this upon development. So, a bit of the history. So, in 2006, August 15th, City Council approved an A605, which was at the time known as a ran annexation. And they zoned this R1, but they restricted it to two dwelling units per acre for that 5.3 acres. And the language that's within that agreement calls out that it's subject to a density limitation of two dwelling units per acre. In addition, they considered gross development acreage. So, they didn't exempt out roads or a right of way that was dedicated. This is the gross land at the time of annexation would be the basis for this two dwelling units per acre. In addition, there was no language in there that suggested that there'd be a range, no more than 25% or no less than this size of a lot or anything. So, they basically said on average, two dwelling units per acre, by the language that's in the agreement. Then, in 2007, Black Stallion Ranch First Edition was approved, and then you see there's, in this one, you have seven lots. It was an eight-lot subdivision, but the one-acre lot to the south was a large one with smaller lots, seven of them off of Hannah. But, more than likely, the market changed in 2007, and, or for whatever reason, there was desire to do a minor subdivision. So, they applied, and they, through an MOU in 2008, did a minor subdivision where they carved out this one-acre piece that was consistent with the Black Stallion Ranch First Edition, and then left the remaining portion for future development. John, does that say 4.21 acres?
Yes.
I believe it does.
Looks like it.
Okay. And this was an exhibit from the time of the MOU. So, in looking at this subdivision plan, everything that was in place before is still current in review of this, as far as condition, criteria five, being with other conditions and/or zoning. So, staff would feel that criteria five is met by still being compliant with an annexation criteria, as well as the zoning criteria. I do want to review, point out, though, that in review of the lot sizing, condition number one allows staff the flexibility, oh, sorry, flexibility to, right, that 20 feet may not work for our drive approaches. We need five-foot setbacks on the side of each driveway, and driveways are a minimum 14 feet, so that'll have to be modified prior to plat to a 24-foot. But, condition one, like I said in the staff report, allows that kind of flexibility to coordinate with the applicant to meet the minimum size requirement for that, that aspect. So, these are the agencies that were routed for this proposed subdivision amendment. Cooney County Fire wanted to state that the proposed, the proposed development will be required to meet all Cooney County Fire requirements for access and egress outlined in the 2015 International File Fire Code. And this is standard with all subdivisions. You got to meet that 2015 Fire Code for access. So, you have to continue to be consistent with that. How they plan to address that in this is where that arrow's pointing at, they want to do a temporary gravel turnaround. So, that'll remain in place until such time either Hannah can be extended in a different direction or other modifications can occur on Hannah. But this would meet and mitigate fire's concerns at this point. The Post Falls Police commented and stated as being neutral on it. So, options, approve as presented, and then your staff report and the conditions that are within, approve with modified conditions, or deny the proposed application. So, at this time, I'd stand for any additional questions you may have for staff regarding this proposed amendment. So, if I met, if I heard you right, I think it was a 5.3-acre annexation originally? Yes. And so, at two units per acre, that's 10.6 units. Would that mean 11 rounded up? Is that what the city typically does, or does that mean 10? We've discussed that. Probably, if it was, I would generally apply it to the whole number, 10. Or I would confer to legal counsel of how... What does legal counsel say?
I don't know that we can answer that. I would have to look and see what our practice has been. I just don't know. I've seen it in different jurisdictions, done different ways. I've seen it where you begin applying rounding, you get about five, you round out. I've also seen it in places where you go to the, the whole number. So, I'd have to look and see what our practices are, that we're consistent with our, what our past practice has been.
Okay. And I think one last question. Is the, do you know if the property owner of that one-acre parcel was part of the application? They weren't part of the application, but we did do the public noticing. Okay. So, they're, they are not the applicant. That's just the owner, the owner of the four acres? Of the four acres. Okay. Of the four acres, correct.
Okay.
Other questions?
So basically, we have the same, the same thing that we had back in 2006, but it's just been modified with that acre taken out. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, it's more or less, yeah, the eight-lot subdivision that was approved...
Yeah.
Is similar to that, except for there's two additional lots and that one-acre lot...
Is taken out.
Is taken out.
Okay.
Correct.
Other questions or comments?
None.
Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead, thank you, sir. We'll have an applicant come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Ah, yeah, John did a good job. He pretty much covered all the bases, but I would like to revisit a few things. So again, this whole thing is kind of based on an anomaly where in the annexation agreement, there was a zoning restriction, which is an anomaly at best. So the currently approved subdivision, you see 5.3 acres on eight lots. This was the approved minimum lot size was 1582, the maximum was 400. You can read it. Median lot size was 20,000. This is the subdivision that's currently approved, and I might say the, now, let's see, I may have it in the next slide. So can't hardly read that. Property was zoned R1 by the Planning Commission, and the two units per acre was imposed by the council through the annexation. That's what I say here. And I give you the verbiage out of the annexation agreement, John's already showed it to you, so I just want to, the last point on this slide is that we, we do have MDA, Master Development Agreement, that is in effect. It's still in effect. It was extended two times, and it does reference the zoning restriction or the zoning requirement in the annexation agreement. So it covers the 5.3, of which we're looking at, as you know, four acres. So the proposed amendment would be 10 lots over the 5.3 acres, minimum lot size 10.2, the maximum, again, is that large piece to the south, that's the little bit over an acre, and then the median lot size is 16,390. The overall density is 1.88 on the 5.3 acres, which is what the density restriction applies to. It's really that quick, I got some cute little graphics here. Adequate water supply, we're extending East Green Acres, and you've got their will-serv. Sewer is, actually, there's, with the original one, sewer was extended onto the property, so it's on the property. Street connectivity is, in essence, the same. You can see, we did the same design, and the proposed land use and density conform to, certainly to the R1 and to the council annexation agreement requirements. Pretty much it.
Questions for applicant?
I do. Mr. Dobler, has the property owner, the one-acre, have they assigned their development rights to the property owner to the north, to your applicant?
I'm not certain, but I haven't heard that yet.
So what would, what would, what would prevent, so wouldn't, wouldn't that one acre be able to come in at some future time for a subdivision because they're one acre and do two lots? And wouldn't doing nine on this property keep them from doing that? Because then the overall density doesn't meet the requirement?
So this amendment would take that 5.3 acres to the maximum density under the council's annexation agreement. That, that could be amended theoretically?
So I guess maybe the answer is I, you have not been assigned their development rights, so you, you have four acres and...
Correct.
Two units per acre for eight, eight units.
Yes. And I would put a footnote to that and say it doesn't necessarily preclude other development because it is zoned R1. The only zoning restriction is, was placed on by the council, and they have the ability to change that. You can, it's legal too, but it doesn't...
The city council could at some point in the future, whether to be a request by a landowner, move forward with a annexation agreement amendment.
I believe that to be true.
But that's the only path forward of getting higher density right now, or rezone.
I believe that to be true also.
Okay.
Staff says yes. Okay. Any other questions for applicant? Ray?
No.
Good. Okay, thank you, sir. Public comment, those in favor?
None.
Those neutral?
None.
Those in opposition? And again, I say this every single month, and I truly mean it, if I butcher your name at all, it is not personal whatsoever. It's, it's just been one of those days, so I apologize. In opposition, does not wish to speak, Mark, is it, Orata?
Good.
Good? Okay. Not in favor of the nine homes instead of the original seven. We were assessed that there would be no more than seven homes to be built, don't want any more traffic in front of my home, lower my home values. In opposition, not wishing to speak, Tricia Brown, please explain how four acres can have nine homes built and still maintain only two homes per acre. This is not good math, please stick with the original agreed-upon seven homes. In opposition, not wishing to speak, Harlan Schleckner, annexation agreement, I'm not sure why are we constantly visiting this agenda item? The city council adopted R1 zoning designation, subject to the density limitations of two dwellings per unit acre. Owner agrees that the development density of the property shall not exceed two residential units per acre. I also understand the sewer system would need a lift station. Where would that be? So there's an opportunity to address that. In opposition, not wishing to speak, Diane Mort is against. In opposition, does wish to speak, Jerry Morrison. Jerry, if you would come up, state your name, address, and you have four minutes, sir.
Jerry Morrison, 2450 Ashraf Court, Black Stallion Ranch. I've listened to everything and I've seen all the documentation, which I have here myself. And let me tell you, the city council, you do a wonderful job. In all the research I've done so far, from 2007 to 2010, 2012, 2017, you've approved everything with, with the Black Stallion Ranch. So one thing I don't understand is the fact that in 2017, the original builder put an amendment into the, the master development plan of Black Stallion Ranch, and it reads, the developer should develop the project in accordance with the minimum terms of the master development as modified in this amendment. The development includes eight single-family residents and approximately 5.3 acres. Approved A1, approved subdivision, Black Stallion Ranch in addition, and so on and so forth. And does this, can I put this on there? And I got this from Tate Engineering because they were with us, the Rans who originally started this, the Black Stallion Ranch. And it is, just, oh, I need the whole thing, other way. That's good right there, okay. And the way I am, and read it to believe, is we have eight lots, which was approved, which is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and then that one acre is the eighth lot. Because the owner of that lot, also in that one acre, attended our Black Stallion Homeowners Association, they have no intention, they've been approached a few times, of putting a road right through their orchard, and they are not know that it's not going to happen. Okay? And the city council approved this in 2017. You're doing a wonderful job. Keep it up. All we want to do is keep what you guys approved. You're doing a fantastic job. That's all I have to say.
All right, Mr. Morrison, thank you very much. And lastly, in opposition wishing to speak, Scott Chapel?
I will concede to what Jerry just said.
Okay. So I will put a ditto, ditto to what Jerry said. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Any others? All right. At this time, we'd offer, provide an opportunity for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Just a quick note on the lift station, no, it can be serviced by gravity, there would be no lift station required.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for staff applicant at this time? No? None? Biggie Joe, no?
Um, no, I don't think so, no.
Okay. Sam?
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close it and open up for comment. Mr. Gimble?
My biggest concern with, I mean, it meets all the criteria with the, I think, with the exception of criteria five, and that has to do with the density and the density restriction. It's not necessarily, I mean, I get the total number of units on the 5.3 acres to be 10, that's, that's great. But because the one-acre lot to the south isn't part of the application, they're not the applicant, and they have not assigned their development rights to the applicant, then if we were to approve nine units on four acres with the total of the 5.3 being 10, then that would restrict that homeowner, that person from ever being able to come in for a subdivision to subdivide their one-acre lot into two half-acre lots. And without first going forward to city council for annexation agreement amendment, which I think would be more appropriate for this applicant to do versus taking the density that should be allotted evenly across the property. So I don't think we can approve it at nine units. I think we could approve eight, but not nine.
Biggie Joe?
I, I think I have to agree. It just seems like we've just been whittling it down to get to where more units each time on what property they have, and like it was stated, they don't have any rights to that acre right now, that extra acre may never, so I don't think it can be considered. So I think that a nine unit there would be too big to, or too small of lots for where they are.
Sam?
I'm on board with both of those. Ditto on that as well, so I agree with the keeping it as is.
Okay.
I'd further say that I'm not a fan of development or density restrictions.
Right.
I, that's, I think, a really poor way to, to do it, but we're kind of stuck with it, so hopefully we don't do any more of those in the future. And that said, I would move to deny Berkshire Place Major Subdivision Amendment, SUBD 2-2019, finding that it does not meet the 2.0 units per acre density requirement for the, for the subject property.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Call for vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gimble?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
So moved. How are we doing on time? Do we need a break? Are we good?
I'm good.
Power through.
Power through. Okay. That being said, then we'll go ahead and open up public hearing, C. Green Meadows First Edition Annex. Jamie to present.
My name is Jamie Hayes, and I am Planner One of the Community Development Department here to present Green Meadows First Edition Annexation, Case File ANNX-2-2019. The owner is River City Properties LLC, and the applicant is Olson Engineering. The Planning and Zoning Commission is being asked to review the annexation request of approximately 40 acres and to make a recommendation of the proposed mixed zoning of single-family R1 residential, medium-density multifamily R2 residential, and community commercial services, CCS designation to city council. And the hatchred is the subject site for the proposed annexation. And to the north, we have West Prairie Avenue, which is a minor arterial. To the, going north and south, we have Greens Ferry Road, which is also a minor arterial. We have Highway 41 to the east, which is a principal arterial, and then we have East Kildir Lane on the very southern portion of the proposed subject site, which is just a local street. The proposed zoning designation is what you see before you. We have R1 zoning designation to the south, and R2 and CCS in the northern portion along Prairie Avenue. The property size is approximately 40 acres. The current land use is agricultural with no topology or vegetation issues. The water provider is Ross Point Water District, and there is a will-serv letter from them, and the sewer provider is the City of Post Falls. There are six zone change criteria that we're going to follow with this, this zoning designation request for this annexation. And one is the, is it consistent with the future land use map? Is it consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan? And zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features, which are all a combination to achieve a balance of land use to help Post Falls remain a desirable, stable, and sustainable community. And bear with me as I go through this, because I'm going to revisit those criteria as I go. This is the current zoning map for the area. Everything in yellow is R1 residential, which is abutting to the west, the subject sites. Everything in red you see on the eastern border is community commercial services, and we have hatched in red the technology mix zone. I also want to note that the city is currently processing an approved annexation of the 60 acres just to the west of this technology mix zone, which would also be an additional 60 acres of technology mix zoning, which then, as you can see, is kitty corner adjacent to the northeast corner of the subject site. The future land use map has this designated, this everything in yellow as residential, with no specific density designation, just residential. Everything in red, we have it as community commercial services, which you can see also encompasses that 60 acres that the city is currently processing. It is worth noting that Highway 41 is supposed to be expanded as well as Prairie Avenue, whoa, my, sorry, my mouse got a little out of control there, which to some degree definitely accommodates a higher density zoning designation and community commercial services. You might wonder, since this is a future land use map, where does that CCS zone? How does that play into this? And, and is this a good assumption to make? Well, I'm just going to revisit that right here with the community commercial service right on Prairie there with medium density to the south, R1. In the comprehensive plan, under residential land use, there is a section that says, "Commercial uses and mixed uses may be considered in areas so designated on the future land use map. Commercial use may also be considered in areas adjacent..." Commercial use may also be considered in areas adjacent to arterial collector streets where traffic volumes exceed 4,000 vehicles per day by a special review process." What we have projected is that the traffic volume is, is, will achieve 20,000 vehicles per day on Prairie Avenue by 2035. So there is some compatibility there. So once again, is this consistent with the future land use map? Through that excerpt from the comprehensive plan, that community commercial services would be, as well as that residential zone for the R2 and R1, that is compatible. Is it consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan? I just showed you an excerpt from the comprehensive plan showing that this, this could be a compatible use based on the vehicles' volume per day. And zoning is assigned following considerations such as street classification, which we have two minor arterials, and less than, a little over a half mile away, we have Highway 41 as a principal arterial. Traffic patterns, well, we know that Highway 41 and Prairie are going to expand, and the existing developments. Future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features. Well, there are no geographic or natural features there that have become issues. The future land use, we know that the technology mix zone is going to, is proposed to that northeastern section. We have a Highway 41 corridor, and we have, I'm just going to flip through this real quick. Down here, we have the Tolemore subdivision, and we have an R1 subdivision coming in right here, and as compatible with that proposed R1, just north of Kildir. And then the following three criteria, finish up the zone change criteria, and the fourth item would be, "Commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically, typically assigned along streets and higher road classifications." And we just, once again, I just stated that the, that the minor arterials that are Prairie Avenue and Greens Ferry and the, would be right next to that CCS and R2 zoning. Limited or neighborhood commercial, lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed farther away from the higher intensity urban activity. This applies, I suppose, by the staggering of higher-density commercial, medium-density, and then going down as a buffer to the R1 residential. And industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes, and maybe situated away from residential zoning is non-applicable in this situation, since there is no industrial zoning proposed. There are annexation conditions that staff has, has put together. All water rights associated with the property will need to be granted to the city or to a municipal water purveyor designated by the city in order to provide service to the property. Dedications of right-of-way and easement on Prairie Avenue and Kildir Lane, and payment of sanitary sewer surcharge per service unit if the property is, is designed to be serviced by the future 12th Avenue, and site access subject to KNPO, Critical Access Corridor Policy. Agencies routed. Agency responses are that Cootney County Fire and Rescue and the Post Falls Police Department both remain neutral on the proposed project. And once again, there's a vicinity map showing the general layout of the proposed annexation. Are there any questions as of right now?
Questions for Jamie?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much. Applicant?
All right. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Commissioner. Name's Eric Olson. I'm a civil engineer, Olson Engineering, 705 South Riverside Harbor Drive in Post Falls, here representing Howard Root and River City Properties. All right. Just, pardon, just getting the hang of this mouse here. Not sure, not sure you can see it really well, but, um, our properties, the, the four squares there in the middle between Prairie and Kildir, and Mr. Root was in here last year with another annexation of the 30 acres south-southwest. It's kind of the area that protrudes along Greens Ferry there, and, uh, so I wanted to let you guys know that we are, we have submitted a subdivision application on that project, and, uh, as a result of that, um, at the completion of that subdivision project, sewer will be extended from Greens Ferry Elementary to the southwest corner of this project. Water likewise, but also extending east along Kildir to loop back to Cecil Road. It's just basically showing, this is a logical next step as far as water and sewer infrastructure go. This is, uh, call it a sneak preview of that subdivision. That's it. This is the layout we submitted. The, it's oriented north-south, just like the rest of the exhibits here, so the main east-west street is Kildir there. That would be improved by the subdivision with sidewalks, pathways, and then we've also got a secondary road to the north of Kildir that would, uh, loop through, uh, the development that would eventually occur with this subject property. So I wanted to kind of follow up on what Jamie was touching on as far as the commercial zoning. We really did try and look at the, at the comp plan and the draft comp plan and, and talk to, talk to the neighbors about what they were planning on their, on their properties. And I'm just going to read a couple of snippets from that. These are actually from the, the draft comprehensive plan. Subject properties in the 41 north focus area of the draft plan, um, so that, some text from that says, "Focus provision of multifamily, commercial, and tech uses near higher classified roadways, and focus provision of commercial uses along arterial collector streets in areas of high traffic volume." Another quote from the plan, "Post Falls recently annexed additional lands for a planned technology park to be located near the northwest corner of Highway 41 and Prairie Avenue. This feature is expected to help diversify land uses and boost demand for commercial services." So that was kind of the reason that, uh, that we wanted to include some commercial along Prairie Avenue, is I think that that's, that's what I read, that your focus is shifting towards, and I wanted to show this snippet from the zoning map that shows all of Prairie Avenue, with the exception of the 41 corridor, is currently zoned for single-family. So we saw this as an opportunity to, to, you know, look towards that, that draft comp plan and propose some uses that would be consistent with that draft plan along Prairie Avenue, um, kind of buffering down towards the south where we go to R1 adjacent to last year's annexation. With that, I'd take any questions.
Questions for applicant? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You, how did you know what I was going to say? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Neutral? Opposed? Okay. So no reasoning for rebuttal. Do we have any questions for applicant, staff, or anything else?
Nope. I do not.
Okay. Go ahead and close the hearing out. Open it up. Sam?
I, uh, it meets all the criteria, so I think it's a pretty straightforward request.
Biggie Joe?
Yeah. I think the same thing, and I, I think the CCS would probably be good, too. We have talked before about trying to buffer from that tech park to, using other stuff to buffer to the single families, so, um, some multifamily or, or R2, and, uh, the CCS would help do that.
Right.
I think it's, I think it's really kind of an interesting, um, I, I actually really think it's a, a great concept with the R2 on the, on the north side, City of Post Falls. If you look at that map there, it's, I think R2 is kind of this orange, um, zoning. Maybe it's mustard brown, I can't, I don't remember. But whatever it is, there's not hardly any of it in Post Falls. It is a zoning that we have been, we, we lack, and, um, we've seen a lot of multifamily requests recently. Obviously, there's a huge demand for that, and so finding a zoning on a high, you know, on a high-traffic road, um, where it, you know, our comp plan speaks to putting higher density and commercial on high-volume streets where they have the capacity to handle the extra traffic. I think it makes sense as a logical extension for the city. Pretty soon, we're going to create a little island of county in there, uh, which hopefully will probably end up gobbling up. So I think it all makes sense.
I agree. I like the idea of mixed density. I think it's a good fit, so therefore, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll give it a try. I move.
Should we make somebody else do it?
Yeah.
Please.
I move to approve the Green Meadows First Edition Annexation, A N N X, um, zero 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 two dash two zero one nine, um, finding that it meets annexation conditions, and, with the zoning, to move this on to city council for approval with a, of 40 acres with a zoning of single-family residential primary, multi-density, R2, and CCS commercial, community commercial services.
Well said. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion forward with a second. Call for vote.
Bishop?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Gimble?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
All right. Move forward to city council. With that being said, this brings us to the last public hearing of the evening. We'll go ahead and open ACUF annexation. Jamie, I believe you're back at it?
Back at it.
All right.
Once again, Jamie Hayes here to present the ACUF annexation case file A N N X dash one dash 2019. The owner and applicant are both J. Patrick ACUF. The Planning and Zoning Commission is being asked to review the annexation request of approximately 20 acres to make a recommendation of the proposed high-density multifamily residential R3 zoning designation to city council. You can see the subject site hatched in red, um, just north of Prairie Avenue, west of Highway 41 and east of Greens Ferry. Once again, Greens Ferry and Prairie are the minor arterials. Highway 41 is the principal arterial. Highlighted in green is the 60-acre annexation site that the city is processing right now that is adjacent to the technology mix zone that is already established. The current land use is agricultural with no significant topology or vegetation issues. The water provider is Ross Point, and the sewer provider is City of Post Falls. The annexation of the subject site is intentionally attempting to be annexed coincidingly with the 40 acres directly to the south to plan for compatible and orderly development, including an extension of public services, which was provided as Exhibit S4 in your staff report. I just want to kind of show you the, how this kind of looks together. We have the R3, which is being requested to the north of the annexation that I just presented, to the south with the technology mix zone to the east. Once again, the zoning criteria, is, is it consistent with the future land use map? Consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan? And zoning is assigned following considerations of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features, all with the efforts of making a sustainable, compatible, um, Post Falls. This is the current zoning map. You can see, once again, that highlighted spot in, um, green, which is the proposed 60 acres that the city is currently processing. Residential in the yellow, technology mixes in hatched red with a community commercial service zone to the east running down Highway 41, which is just, I think, a little over a half mile away from the subject site. I wanted to show, um, kind of a higher overview of the existing uses that are, that are already there and what is proposed. So, once again, we have the Tolemore subdivision. There it is, right here. We have the Green Meadows subdivision right here. Highway 41, technology mixed. An R2, R1, community commercial services, and then R3 directly across. It's not inconsistent with the future land use map. There is, uh, in the comprehensive plan, it defines, um, the G2 zone as managed growth with designations into assigned areas that can support mixed use in the proximity to larger streets. It is consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan of creating a mixed-use, walkable, less-car-dependent area. And we see that the, we have the street classifications to support it, traffic patterns, and there is going to be a lot of existing, um, development occurring around it, future land uses such as the technology mix zone. It looks like it's going to be a very, really busy area. Highlight, I actually go back to this. Highlighted in black is a community commercial node, and like I said, about a half mile, three-quarters of a mile away from the subject site. And once again, commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications. We discussed the Prairie Avenue expansion, Highway 41 expansion, and limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed farther away from the higher-intensity urban activity, not necessarily applicable here, and the industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes is also not applicable in this situation. All of the agencies that were routed are shown on the screen right, right above, and there were two agency responses. Post Falls Police Department is neutral, and Cootney County Fire and Rescue remains neutral on the proposed annexation, but notes that the property is not within the KCFR district boundaries and will have to apply for annexation into the fire district prior to any development of the property. And once again, there is the subject site. Do you have any questions about this annexation request?
Questions for Jamie? Anyone? No? All right. Thank you very much. Call the applicant up. Mr. ACUF.
My name is Pat ACUF. I live in Fernand Village. Been a, I've been a resident for a long time, 74 years. In talking with the planning staff, this seems to be a great fit for an R3, and I get that it's dense. But surrounded by, basically surrounded by the new tech center of 385 acres, that's going to hopefully create a lot of jobs. Those people are going to need someplace to live. Seems like the roads that are, that are being upgraded, Prairie and 41, fit with the criteria for the, for your ordinances in the comprehensive plan. I don't have a lot to say about this, other than I just seem to think this is a, a great fit for what's going on in that area. And I would, I don't know how much R3 you have in the City of Post Falls, but it seems to me that if there's ever a place for an R3 zone, that's it with what's going on there. Questions?
Questions for Mr. ACUF?
No.
Nope? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public comment in favor? Can I trade you? Thank you. Not wishing to speak in favor, Doug. You pronounce your last name for me?
Denisha.
Denisha. Okay. Need this for the workers at the proposed tech park. It, uh, says, "Should allocate traffic in surrounding roads to this property that is adjacent to the tech park on the property as, as it's well." Not wishing to speak in favor, Gene Denasha. "The housing is good for employees who'll be working at the proposed tech park." Also not wishing to speak in favor is Paul Callahan, and he is just simply in favor of it. So, with three in favor, I believe there would be no need for any type of rebuttal. Do we have questions for staff?
I just have, uh, what's the timeline for upgrading on Prairie? To, you know?
I would actually ask Bill Melvin if he could come up with the engineering department.
I would actually ask Bill Melvin if he could come up with the engineering department and comment on that possibility.
The intersection of Prairie and 41 will be done here within a couple of years with the improvements that ITD is doing. That'll carry backwards to Tullamore. The rest of Prairie is being developed as development occurs, and they either do their frontage improvements, or they would cash out their frontage improvements, and we would then try to consolidate those into one large project. So, you know, from our standpoint, we don't have a project that we're going to be developing primarily development-driven.
Okay.
Along Prairie Avenue. But the intersection and that capacity at 41 intersection will be dramatically improved here.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, that's a tag along to that. Do you know if the, it sounds like the Post Falls Highway District doesn't have anything on their plans, on their books, like they did on the other side of 41? Do you know?
Not that I've seen from them. They have some signal improvements, you know, and some stuff along Prairie, but not necessarily a full widening project like this. Acquisition of right-of-way and easements is always an issue, an expensive issue as you move forward, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Applicant? Anyone? Before we shut her down? Okay, none said? Shut her down. Ray?
It's kind of an interesting one, because if you were to look at that today and think 20 acres of apartments, you'd think, "That doesn't fit there." But that's not what we're really here doing. I think we're looking at a 20 acres that will hopefully be surrounded by a tech park. So it'd be, it'll have, on two sides, a tech park. On the south side, there's going to, there's Prairie Avenue, which is designated as an arterial and a major east-west route across Cootney County. At least the Prairie, anyway. We've got, if you look at the zoning map all the way around, and you see the, what's out there already, it's tons of R1 in the vicinity. If you see how Tullamore is developing out, all the commercial ground is, almost all of it, with the exception of the stuff right next to Highway 41 is going to apartments. There's a huge demand in the corridor for apartments, and I think that's a good fit for R3 zoning. I can't imagine any other fit, other than maybe technology zone, but that's kind of a, that's a big property-type zone, and I don't even know if that's the right thing here. So I would think that R3 is probably the best thing for that. I can't imagine it being R1 right next to technology mixed. I think that'd be a mistake.
Big Joe?
Yeah, I have to agree. I think, again, it's a good buffer property to the technology area. My only kind of concern is a lot of stuff going in there, coming in on Prairie from Tullamore, coming back through in the back, and so there's a lot of traffic on Prairie going to be there. So hopefully, it'll be improved soon.
Sam?
I would say, to add just a wish list on there, it'd be nice, maybe upfront, have some CCS. I don't know if that'd be an option, but everything else is there, so I think we're good.
Yeah, I think Ray brought up an interesting point, because when I first looked at it, and I'm like, "It's that far out? Oh, my gosh." But when you begin to look at how this is developing out and the potential, and having even today done a whole bunch of work on, I won't say apartments, I'll say affordable housing, and the absolute lack, I mean, people just don't understand what a lack there is. I look at the tech park and individuals that are coming in, short and long-term, that are needing places to stay, there's just, there's a lot of components there that I would have to say it makes way more sense now than it did earlier. So, with that being said, I would entertain a motion from someone.
Okay, I'll try again. I move to approve, forward to City Council, Annexation Request, Annex 0001-2019, 20 acres with the zoning of high-density, multifamily R3.
A second.
Got a motion forward with a second. Call for vote.
Carrie?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, move to City Council. Mr. Manley, any new business?
There's none.
Staff comments?
None.
Any commissioner comments are good of, good for the order? Bits of wisdom?
I'm just here a second.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, if so, then we'll go ahead and look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Could have done that.